How are you?
I'm nervous.
Okay, we're good to go.
Ready to go? Okay, perfect. Welcome, everyone. We are excited to be with you this evening, our Hopkins community. My name is Rhoda Mary Perry Reed, I'm the Superintendent of Schools for Hopkins. And welcome to our community engagement session tonight focused on Minnesota School Finance and hosted by our school board. We are very much looking forward to engaging with you this evening, sharing information with you about how public school finance works in the state of Minnesota. We had a guest speaker from Bellwether with our school board a few meetings ago, and she did such a great job that we wanted her to also present to our community. So Krista Capehut is with us this evening, and as a superintendent, I just wanted to welcome everyone into the space. Again, this is a school board hosted event. We will probably present for about an hour and then do some Q and A at the end. And I'm going to turn it over to our school board treasurer, Rachel Heartland. She'll provide a little bit of framing around the fiscal shortfall throughout the state of Minnesota and then introduce a couple of other individuals. We do have the leader of our CFAC team with us this evening, our Citizens Financial Advisory Committee. They're a group of parents who help us with budget parameters. And so there's a lot of people here tonight to just work together to provide you with information and the space to listen and learn and hopefully ask questions at the end. So thanks again for being here, everyone, and I'm going to turn it over to our school board treasurer, Rachel Heartland.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mary Perry Reed, and good evening, everyone. I am Rachel Heartland. I am the treasurer of the school board, and I welcome you to this important conversation about the financial landscape of public education in Minnesota and how that impacts us here in Hopkins Public Schools. I am the parent of three children in this district, one each in the elementary, middle, and high schools. And I'm also a member of CFAC, which is the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee. The school board this year had a goal of making the district's budget discussions more transparent, more accessible, and more understandable. And so we've wanted community members to be able to understand the vocabulary and the implications of these vital discussions. So to that end, as Dr. Mary Perry Reed said, we invited Krista Capehut to speak tonight, and she is an expert in public education, funding, and policy. And so before I hand it to her, I want to take just a moment to recognize and introduce some of the other people on the call. There are multiple board members on, and this is always a little bit awkward, and I'm so sorry in advance if I miss anybody. I see Chair Shannon Andreessen. I see multiple admin staff members from the district, including Jolene Goddari from marketing. I see Anne Erdles. I'm sorry, it is difficult for me to read all of these people. I specifically want to give Director of Business Services, Tereau Chapanduka, a moment, and then the head of the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee a moment to introduce themselves. Then I'll take it back, go over a little bit of history about the budget shortfall for Minnesota and some logistics for tonight, and then I'll hand it over to Krista. Director Chapanduka, are you ready to introduce yourself?
Sure, thank you, Treasurer Heartland. My name is Tereau Chapanduka, and the director of Business Services for the district. I will just be sitting in the background listening, and then I'm happy to answer any questions after the presentation. Welcome, everyone, thank you.
And you, Luke?
Yeah, hi, my name's Luke Jacobson. I've been part of the Hopkins Volunteer CFAC Committee since 2014, so I think by facto the leader. Let's just give a brief overview of CFAC and some of the citizen involvement that goes into the budgeting process. I also have a sixth and eighth grader that have been part of Hopkins School since early childhood family education. So as part of CFAC, we meet with the administration team to review the budget for the upcoming school year, which this fall we started the budget process for the school year starting in July of 2025 and then ending June 2026. We'll typically meet four to six times prior to presenting budgeting information to the school board in January or February. Some of the items that we kind of go dig into and review include, which I'll kind of compare to the private sector, which is more my background, but current and anticipated enrollment, which really drives the district's revenue, current and anticipated wages and benefits, which represent almost over eighty percent of the operating expense. We take a look at other operating expenses, as well as restrictions on funds and what can be applied to those operating expenses. We look at a little bit the political environment, which really leans towards the state level, and also the financial health of the district, and some of the fund balances that school districts in the state of Minnesota are required to maintain. I'm looking forward to this session, I think it'll give a great overview of the district finances, which can be complicated and I think are not often fully understood. As an example, I think one of the things CFAC has discussed this fall is how, as a group, our property taxes related to the schools have decreased in Hopkins, but property taxes for the city and county have increased. As I mentioned, we're a volunteer committee of parents with students in the district. We're always open to new participants that have a financial background geared towards budgeting. Volunteers are required to reside within the Hopkins School's boundaries, and I'd say please reach out to a school board member if interested in learning more and speaking much.
Thank you very much, both of you, who just introduced yourself, and again, everyone who joined us for the call tonight. And I want to stress that this conversation is only the first step in kind of building the shared understanding of the picture of funding that shapes our district. So, community members on this call can anticipate future opportunities to engage around other topics. There will be more about the specifics of our budget later on in the budgeting process. And the budgeting process began several months ago already with district leadership and will continue throughout the spring with the board, with staff members, with community members, even with students. And typically, a final budget is passed in May. So there are dozens, if not hundreds, of conversations that are going to happen between now and then. Another topic that the community will hear more about, which won't be touched on much tonight, is the topic of another source of school funding for public school districts in Minnesota, which is voter referenda. And those are questions to fund school districts that appear on local ballots. I wanted to share a few logistics for tonight. This call is being recorded, and so it will be available in the future on the school board's webpage, which you can navigate to from the district's main website. And so just like any other board meeting, you will be able to see it listed there. So if you could forward it to anyone who may not have been able to attend this session, I mean, you can revisit it if you need to. Community members, including staff, including parents, they were able to submit questions for this event via a Google form prior to this event, and you can continue to submit those during Ms. Capehut's presentation, but we will not interrupt her to ask any of those questions. When the Q and A session starts at around 7:00 PM, we will work our way through as many questions as possible. Some topics or some questions might be combined for either clarity or for brevity if the topics are similar. And I want to set the expectation that very likely there will be questions that we cannot fully answer. As I mentioned, this budgeting process is exactly that, a process. And so there will be things that have not been decided. In fact, nearly everything about the budget has not been decided. So we will share some thoughts, some of the actions and conversations that have been taking place so far, and do our best with questions, and everyone to be assured that the board will have access to those questions, and they will inform our thoughts and our questions as we go throughout this process. And you will be able to see those, the community can tune into those conversations at our school board meetings. Public education funding is both critical to our mission here in the district, and it's incredibly complex. So we're going to discuss tonight primarily the main source of our funding, which is from the state of Minnesota. And we're going to build some understanding around the history and the mechanisms of public education funding from its roots to its modern challenges and opportunities. To guide us through this critical topic, we are fortunate to have Krista Capehut with us. As we mentioned, she's an expert in public education, funding, and policy, and the board recently benefited from her knowledge at a boardwalk workshop on November 12th. So any community member who's not totally overwhelmed by the topic after tonight can encourage that, or is encouraged to view that recording on the Hopkins School Board website. I'd like to thank Krista for sharing her expertise and her time with us and helping us build a stronger foundation of knowledge as we partner in facing this budget hurdle together. Take it away, Krista.
Great, thank you so much for that. So, hi, everybody, I'm Kristy Capehut. I actually was born and raised in northeast Minneapolis, and I still live there. Attended public schools in Minneapolis and in Robinsdale. A little bit of background, I started my career as a special education teacher in Chicago Public Schools, and then I moved back home to work in Minnesota State Education Policy Advocacy for six years before I went to Bellwether. So, like I said, I'm still in Minnesota, still very deeply connected to this work, and really grateful to share the space with you all. But I do want to note that I am not here in my official capacity as somebody who works for Bellwether. I'm here in my capacity as somebody who works in state education finance. So with that, I will share my screen, and we can start. So. So here's the agenda for tonight. What I'm going to do is I'm going to ground us in the Minnesota November financial forecast. It's actually the December forecast, but it comes out in November, so I'll make that change. But I want to ground us in the reality of the budget circumstances that Minnesota's going to be facing over the next few years. I'm going to give a broad overview of some of the main education, state education finance funding streams in Minnesota, and I have pulled some Hopkins-specific data to share with you all, and then go over some trends in enrollment, since state funding is driven by student enrollment, and then the impact that it has on district budgeting, and then we'll end with a Q and A. And also, it shows at the top of there, I have a cold, so apologies that I sound like this. I sound much better usually, so if I take a break to go off camera, it's because I'm dealing with something to do with probably coughing. Just wanted to note that. Okay, so digging into the forecast. The forecast is important because Minnesota, we work, our budget works on, the state budget works on a two-year process. So in odd number of years, this is when the legislature actually sets the budget for two years. So next year is 2025, it's an odd number year, it's a longer session. So this is when they'll set the budget for the next two years, which will impact how much money the state will fund to schools. And then in even number of years, those are policy years, depending on the financial health of the state. There could be some money that's allocated, but that's not required. So, for example, in, I believe it was 2022, there was no education bill that was passed in that year, but that's okay. Oh, it's not okay, but that could happen because they had set a budget the year prior. So just, just so you know, when I'm going through the numbers here, I'm operating off two-year numbers, of two years, because we have a two-year budget. So the December forecast came out in November, like I said. And so it kind of, again, it gives us the fiscal health that we can think about for the next biennium, and it also projects certain fiscal health for the next years as well. And so the November forecast said that we would have a smaller surplus, we should have a surplus of $616 million over the course of two years. This is much lower than was previously estimated, because Minnesota had lower sales and income taxes. And those are our two primary drivers of our state funding. And so we have that small surplus. But what really we need to look forward to is in the biennium after that, we are projected to have, the state calls it a structural imbalance, it's just a fancier word for a deficit. And so what that kind of means, though, is that even though there's a small surplus this session, we will likely not really see a lot of additional new funding because of the projected deficit in the years forward. And so we have the projected deficit. We also have to think about the political makeup of what's happening in Minnesota right now. So we also have a split legislature where we have a tie in the House, and the Democrats do control the Senate and the executive branch, so the governorship. But with this split legislature, there's going to have to be more compromises being made because the two parties have to work together to come up with a budget. So the smaller surplus in combination with a split legislature, I'm going to guess we're not really going to have a ton of additional new money put into not just education, but in other areas. And to give you some context on the drivers of our state budget, oh, sorry, of the state budget. This was, so I have a source here, this is shared on the Minnesota Office of Management and Budget website, but basically, health and human services and education are the two biggest drivers of expenditures in the budget, and they also take up the most amount. But within education, the big driver is special education funding expenditures. And so if you look at this bar chart, what we see here in the green is that is the cost of special education. And as you can see, it's been going up at a faster rate than general education and other costs. Some of the main drivers cited for these increased expenditures are transportation, more students being identified for services, and increasing wages. And so just to keep this in mind, some of the main drivers and some of the larger context as we go into the session, and how that could potentially impact not just state funding overall, but funding for Hopkins. So some big things, so some general things I want to ground us in before we switch over. So when we look nationally, sorry, I'm hearing some feedback, sorry. When we look nationally, public schools are funded from three main sources, right? Local, that's your local property taxes, state sources, and then federal. Minnesota ranks 19th nationally across the country in terms of per pupil spend, average per pupil spending. So on average in Minnesota, the average per pupil gets $17,955 between local, state, and federal sources. But when we isolate that state funding amount, we see that Minnesota jumps to eighth in the country for average state per pupil funding at about $11,115 per pupil. And so our state funding in Minnesota on average accounts for about sixty-two percent of our total funding. And then, so we have local funding accounting for about twenty-eight percent on average, and then that federal funding about ten percent. That has shifted because of that one-time federal funding from the COVID relief dollars, that SRR funding. That money has expired, though, and so we'll probably see that, we'll see that those federal shares right size. But basically, what's takeaway from this is that the state makes up almost two-thirds of the total per pupil funding in Minnesota. And so it's an important piece of the pie, it's an important piece to understand. And so just to ground us in some general language, there's a really great resource online called the Minnesota School Finance, A Guide for State Legislators. It's pretty, it's very comprehensive, but it's pretty broken down. But some, some basic terms. When we talk about revenue, we're talking about monies that are available through the state aid and through levied money, which is the local. And so the levied money is the money that's raised from taxation on properties, that's the local dollars. And then the aid money is the state money that's primarily from this income and sales tax, and that's paid to districts. So I'm going to be focusing on the aid portion of funding this evening and not the levied part of funding. So where, so what I'm going to do now is I'm going to start broad with our state funding, so our state general funding. Then I'm going to go down until we get to those very specific state funding streams. And so thinking about, again, over the course of two years, because we have a two-year budget, most of Minnesota's money comes from sales and income tax. And so again, when those things go down, we have less state funding, which then impacts education. State education funding, hired funding, health and human service funding, it affects everything. But our two big sources of income in Minnesota are income and sales tax. And so where does all that money go? So this is a breakdown of how that total amount of money, that seventy-seven and a half billion over two years, is distributed. And as we see here, about thirty-five percent of that funding is distributed to education, and then the second piece of that pie, almost thirty percent, is health and human services. So if you recall back to the forecast, the two biggest expenditure drivers in our budgets are education, health, and human services, makes sense, it makes up two of our biggest portions of the pie. But so then, that trickles down again, so that when we have smaller surpluses, or if we have a projected deficit, those are the two things that are most likely also going to see cuts or no additional funding. So just keeping kind of all that centered as we go through. So isolating that thirty-five percent of the pie, okay, that thirty-five percent, how is that broken down? So this is again for a biennium, so it's two years, so it's $21.3 billion over the course of two years. Most of the money from our education allocation from the state goes to general education funding. I will go into what is included in general education, but the bulk of the funding, almost three-fourths, goes to general education funding. Something to note here is that when I talk about general education funding, I am not talking about special education funding. In Minnesota, we separate special education funding out of our main formula. Now, that is unique, most states have a formula that's built in, but we separated out in Minnesota. And so about twenty percent of our general fund money for education goes to special education. And then we have those smaller line items. So we see we don't put as much in for early childhood education, facilities, state agencies, things like that. So the bulk of the funding goes to general education and special education funding, which are the two areas that I'm going to cover next. So taking this general education, that $15.5 billion, breaking that down. So this is just for one year, this is for fiscal year '24. What we saw, if my device was muted, if I mute my device, though, can you hear me? No, right?
No, sorry, Krista, that was for Steve.
Oh, sorry, okay, sorry. I was like, okay. So taking that $15.2 billion and breaking that down, what we see is that the bulk of the money, so the bulk of our education funding, goes to something that we call the Basic Formula Allowance. The Basic Formula Allowance is a per pupil amount that every district and charter school receives for their total enrolled students. So it's not based off student need, it's not based off of if a student qualifies as an economically disadvantaged student, or for special education services, or for an English learner. It's, it's every pupil, regardless of need, gets that certain amount of per pupil funding, and the district gets that for the charter school. We then also have compensatory revenue. Compensatory revenue is our funding stream in Minnesota for economically disadvantaged students. This is about $866 million a year. And then I also want to call out here, the other stream I want to talk about is English learner, English language learner funding. That's about, it's about $113 million annually, but it doesn't account for very much of our funding. There have been increases that were made that I'm going to talk about, but it's still lower, it's still a lower share of our funding. So next what I'm going to do is go through certain funding streams that I've talked about and break it down as to what those are, and then also talk about some of how that relates to Hopkins. So the Basic Formula Allowance, which I said on the previous slide, is the largest allocation for education. The formula allowance for this fiscal year, so for this school year, is $7,281 per pupil. So that means that for every single student that Hopkins has, they're receiving state revenue of $7,281 per pupil. Then the, so for fiscal year '23, which was the most recent number that I found on the Minnesota Department of Education, they have a data center and they have a website with some fiscal numbers. So in fiscal year '23, Hopkins received $51.2 million in basic formula revenue, and I will fix that typo before it is sent out to you all. So this is the biggest part of the state aid that districts receive, is this Basic Formula Allowance. And this formula allowance does change, does increase every year. Generally speaking, there is a, there was a statutory change, so it will go up adjusted for inflation capped at three percent in a couple of years, but the state legislature has generally increased it by about two percent annually. Switching to compensatory revenue, so the funding stream for low-income Switching to compensatory revenue, so the, the uh funding stream for low-income students. So compensatory revenue is um a site-based revenue, so it's calculated at the school, but it's distributed to the district. Um, and it's based off of the percentage of students who qualify for free, just-priced lunch. It's about eight hundred and fifty million. Um, in fiscal year twenty-three, Hopkins received about three million in compensatory revenue. Um, at least eighty percent of the revenue must be distributed to the qualifying school sites. That was a legislative change before it was fifty percent. Um, and then for this year, so for this school year, um, there is a hold harmless provision, which a hold harmless provision means that a district cannot receive less compensatory revenue funding than they've received in the previous year. And this is to address the issue of um universal school meals. So we passed universal school meals in Minnesota, yeah, which is great. Um, but because of that, there's not as much, there's not a need then for families to fill out their free, just-priced lunch forms. Um, and so there was a legislative fix where we're gonna move to um using direct certification. But um to account for that, there is a one-year hold harmless. And so special education and English learner cross subsidies. So I'm sure a lot of you have read about this in the paper. This has been covered a lot over the last couple of years. Um, and again, thinking back to the forecast, one of the largest, the largest driver in in um education costs is special education funding. So a cross subsidy is um the amount of funding that districts and charter schools have to pay out of pocket in the absence of dedicated state and federal funding for educating students with disabilities and English language learners. And so the special education cross subsidy, so in Minnesota, we spend about two billion dollars annually to educate special education students. Um, and so in fiscal year twenty-two, the special education cross subsidy, meaning how much funding the district spent, so how much the district expenditures were minus the state funding, was about eight hundred and eleven million. Um, and for context, nineteen percent of Minnesota's student population have been identified for student, for um special education services. So this is a large portion of our student population that have been identified for services, and so this is a very, this is a rising cost for districts. And so if we look at the figure, the um picture that I share with you all, we have this blue line here, which are district expenditures. And then we have this pink here, which are the state revenues. And so this gap here, this is the cross subsidy. Um, which um is about two hundred and nine, is about six hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um, the median cost is six hundred and ninety dollars per student identified for services. The costs fluctuate based off need and services, um, but it ever, it's, the median cost was about six hundred and ninety-two dollars per student identified for services. And then for the English learner cross subsidy, um in fiscal year twenty-three, uh Minnesota spent about sixty million dollars annually on English learners uh with the EL cross subsidy at about a hundred and eighteen million. And then ten percent of Minnesota's student population uh have identified as English learners. So again, when we're thinking about these costs, it's large shares of our student population, they're drivers on district budgets. But there's, but also thinking too about, like, these are students who have additional need, and we should be funding, funding, we should be providing funding so that districts are equipped, so that they can hire the staff or get the services that those students need to be successful. Um, and so what I did here is I pulled data um from, there's a special education cross subsidy report that is given to the legislature. And so I pulled this for a fiscal year twenty-three, so it's a little old, but this is the best available, available data that I had. And so um what I wanna show you all here is what you have in green is the state special education revenue to Hopkins. In gold, you have the costs that the district spent. So in fiscal year twenty-three, Hopkins spent about seventeen point six million dollars to educate its students with disabilities. The state initially gave Hopkins, though, through its formula, nine point six million, which left the district to have to pay for the remaining amount, eight million dollars. Now, the state did an adjustment, so the state gave an additional about one point one million dollars to Hopkins. But it's, so that's still left um about seven million dollars that Hopkins had to make up through local revenues or other revenues um to pay to educate their students with disabilities, to provide the services that they are legally required to receive. Breaking down the English learner cross subsidy for Hopkins, so this is the Minnesota House Research Department. And we have really great um nonpartisan of staff at, in the House and the Senate in Minnesota, and so they've done some really great research, and they always do some runs to show the fiscal impact of things. And so again, this is from fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, so it's a little old, but still uh shows the, shows the cross subsidy. So what we have here is we have the um baseline state revenue that the Hopkins received, and then there was the small adjustment. But this is how much, um, so this is how much money, though, that the district actually spent to educate its English language learners, leaving a cross subsidy of about one point two million. So again, that's one point two million that the district had to pay either through local revenue or other state, more flexible state revenues to educate its English language learners. And so um I referenced this earlier, but there were some significant changes during the twenty-twenty-three legislative session um to help districts um deal with the English learner and special education cross subsidies. And so um the English learner per pupil amount in the state formula was increased before it was seven hundred and four dollars per pupil. And this is per um English, per, per pupil for, who, who've been identified for English ling- English language services. So it was increased from seven hundred and four dollars to uh one thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And then there's a concentration amount uh which i- is based off of the percentage of English learners that are at, in the district, and that was also increased. Um, and then it's set to go up again um in fiscal year twenty-seven, as well as the state will also start covering twenty-five percent of a cross subsidy, of the English learner cross subsidy. Uh, and then for special education, um, there was also an increase for helping districts um deal with their special education cross subsidies. Um, and so the state now helps districts um cover forty-four percent of their cross subsidies. And that is also set to go up again to fifty percent. And so if we're thinking about the additional monies that uh Hopkins is set to receive through this funding, uh these funding changes, what we see here is that uh they're projected to get additional three point eight million dollars for the, for last fiscal year, and then this fiscal year, another about three point nine million dollars in total aid. So even with these additional monies, uh Hopkins will still have a uh cross subsidy, likely still have a cross subsidy for special education English learners. Um, uh, it does drop, though, from that eight million to about four point four million. So it's gone down, less monies, but still there is some there that they'll, that you're, the district will likely have to grapple with. So that was a very quick overview. We've covered, that was covering a lot um about state education formula, like the main parts of the state education formulas, impact on Hopkins, uh happy to circle back to slides if people have questions later. But I wanna shift now to um enrollment and the impact on district budgets. So in Minnesota, our state education funding, and it's not just Minnesota, I should say, across the country, most, the vast majority of state funding formulas are highly dependent on district student enrollment. So enrollment shifts affect budgets very differently at the uh state and local levels. So if student enrollment falls at the state level, it doesn't necessarily mean that there will be cuts to education funding. Rather, the state could opt to allocate their funding more generously and equitably among fewer students. But that does mean that districts will likely see less state funding if they have fewer students. And so if a district does receive less state funding, then they'll, they're, they'll have to make up that money or make some shifts in terms of potential school consolidation, cuts to programs, cuts to staffing. Um, unless the state has a whole harmless policy, so like that example that I gave about, there's a one-year hold harmless policy for compensatory revenue for this year. Minnesota does not have a broad state hold harmless policy, like some states do, like in Missouri, Massachusetts. Um, and it's not a permanent one either, so um, so when the shifts in enrollment happen, um, it affects the state and locals differently. And when we look to the four main factors that impact KDA, the public school enrollment, um, the four factors really are declining birth rates. So nationally, over the last decade, all states have experienced a decline in birth rates. Um, and this refers to the increasing number of children being born over time. And so when you have fewer students being born over time, that's fewer students that are gonna enter our public school systems. And so then we generally see lower um enrollment, particularly in the uh elementary levels. State-to-state migration, so this is the movement of people from one state to another. Um, so states that have net population gains, they often see increases in public school enrollment. Conversely, states with net losses face declining enrollment. Uh, Minnesota has seen some gains over the last few years. We'll see if that continues, um, but that also impacts enrollment. Um, immigration impacts enrollment, right? So if a state gets more immigrants, they'll have a higher uh, and they, those, and and those individuals have uh children, they'll have a higher student population. And it generally does have a positive impact on public school enrollment. And then private school choice and homeschooling programs, so programs where um a s- uh student can choose to go to um a private school or to be homeschooled, um, also fit into this as well. Minnesota doesn't really have any of those choice programs, like Arizona has a universal ESA. Uh, Florida has a lot of private school choice programs. We don't really have that here, so it's not as big of a factor, but still is a factor, um particularly in COVID, where we did see a larger number of families choosing to homeschool their children. So thinking about those factors, what I did is I pulled data from the Minnesota Department of Education's data center um and did some calculations for Hopkins. Um, and so I'm gonna go into those for a minute, but just to show here, so between twenty twenty-two and twenty-three-one, um, the federal, um, the, it's the National Center for Education Statistics. They do some um enrollment projections to project how states' future enrollment trends are gonna look through a fiscal, through school year twenty thirty-one. And um what they saw is if you look here in Minnesota, we are projected to have a state of public school enrollment decline by one point eight percent. Which again, that will affect districts differently, but if we have generally fewer students, that could impact uh more districts where they'll have to, they'll receive less state funding, and they'll have to make that up at the local level. So looking at Hopkins, though, so I, again, I pulled this data from the Minnesota Department of Education Data Center for fiscal years uh two thousand seventeen to twenty twenty-four. Um, and so what I found is that total enrollment at Hopkins from these, through these seven years, has gone up by about two percent. And then when I looked at the student demographic, uh disaggregated it by different student groups, so student groups that often require more support or on more services for academic success, uh what we do see here is that um students who are economically disadvantaged, students who qualify for special education services or who are English language learners, their growth rates are higher than the total enrollment. So even though with this enrollment, Hopkins is likely receiving more state monies, that monies may not be enough to make up for the costs associated with educating students who have greater need for academic success. So just something to think in mind as you think about this, the district budget. And then something in Minnesota we have that really does impact a lot um of schools is open enrollment. So open enrollment is a public school choice option, so students um can choose to go to a district that is not within their resident district where they live. I did that, right? I grew up in North Minneapolis. I open enrolled into the Robinsdale School System for middle school. Um, and so this isn't, so when a student doesn't go to that school or or to that district, right? That the monies, the state monies that would go to that district leaves as well. And so during the twenty twenty uh three, twenty twenty-four school year, um, nine, about ninety-one thousand students in Minnesota, which is about ten percent of the Minnesota's public school population, de- used open enrollment. And so um I pulled the numbers for open enrollment in Hopkins, and so what this shows is by school year, this is the students lost, so these are students who, their families live in Hopkins and they left to go to a different district. These are students gained, meaning the students don't live in Hopkins, but they came over or opened a role to attend Hopkins School District, and then the net. I don't know anything about student need or student demographics. All I know is that through open enrollment, Hopkins has, over year, gained anywhere from two hundred to about three hundred and fifty students. Another facet of data that is missing, I wanna acknowledge, is charter school enrollment. In Minnesota, we do not track, at the state level at least, where students, if a student lives in Hopkins and would choose to go to a charter school, I do not have that data. If I had it, I would give it to you, but I'm sure that's also something that does impact student enrollment. And so uh that is all I have. We, I went through that quicker than I thought, yay. Or if I spoke too fast, please ask a clarifying question, we can go back. Um, but this is my personal email, so if you have questions, please um feel free to email me. Happy to do a coffee chat, happy to talk about anything. Um, and so with that, I will stop presenting and open it up for questions.
Well, thank you so much, Krista. Um, I am so appreciative of your breakdown and your thoughts on this extremely complex topic. It was really helpful to hear you start kind of at a very high level with the state's actual income, the changes that we're looking at even at the state level, and then how that translates to funds for public education in general, and then more specifically how Hopkins state aid is determined. And so of particular importance to us here in Hopkins is a couple of the topics that you touched on. One is that state's per pupil funding. And so though the Minnesota Legislature did a couple of years ago pass that one-time-only four percent increase in the formula, the immediate, in that school year, the um, the cost, the operating cost of transportation, food, supplies, contracted services, and then wages, like appropriate market wages for teachers and staff across the board, immediately eclipsed that four percent. And that four percent really represented a large investment. It really represented a, a value um from that state's legislature for public education. And while that is true, that it was a big investment, it is also true that our, that state formula has lagged behind costs consistently since two thousand and three. So then we are at a point now where every year requires that a district very carefully evaluate the services it can provide, because it must provide those services with just a little bit fewer resources. Um, it is a good step that Minnesota has tied our formula increases to inflation. So um if we do have a year where inflation costs outpace our estimates, that hopefully we will see some of those costs back from the state. Um, but that is still capped at three percent, and in some sectors, in some food and in some transportation sectors for this past year, we saw greater than three percent, greater than four percent increases even. Um, and remember that the head of CFAC, Luke, he mentioned that in the district, over eighty percent of our operating costs go to pay the wages and the benefits of our very cherished teachers and staff. And so any increase, any large increase in their salaries, and I think it was five percent this year and five percent next year, and that was approximately average for this area in Minnesota, um, those have a very large impact on our budget. Another thing that's important to us here at Hopkins, you mentioned enrollment. And so despite all those factors that you mentioned, Krista, that negatively impact enrollment in Minnesota, like the declining birth rates and the state-to-state migration and immigration changes and private school enrollment, uh, it is a small point of pride that Hopkins has managed to um maintain small enrollment increases in each of the last several years. And enrollment is very important to the board and to admin, and we have to walk a line between slow and steady increases, so as not to overwhelm any particular grade or any particular school in our system, because that, of course, has negative impacts on class sizes and, and uh student satisfaction. So given all of the complexities that we are facing, we really appreciated your oversight or your overview, excuse me. And I think we'll move on to reading some community questions. Um, Shannon, are you on? And would you like to pick the first question, and then we'll kind of see who is the person best suited to answer that question?
Yes, hi, Rachel. I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So um I'm just gonna kind of go down the list of when um questions were submitted. And I think this might be a good um question for Krista, but I'll let um I, you, Rachel, or Krista decide. Um, with the state's recent budget surplus, I think we were talking about that, what um that education was a priority in that, in that uh uh legislative session. How is Hopkins addressing current bu- budget challenges? Can you explain where state funds have been allocated? And who typically would you say in a school district monitors those decisions?
That, that seems like a school district question, like who monitors the funding in the district and where the fund goes, right? That.
Yeah, absolutely. I was thinking more along the recent budget surplus.
Oh, sure. Want me to speak to that and then I'll pass this back to you for the second part?
Yeah, yeah, and I think we are kind of touching on it, but just to be more specific.
Yeah, so I want to go back to sharing the slide because I think it's important. So there, there there is a surplus, but I do want to note that it is a very small surplus. It's only six hundred and sixteen million. And again, in a two-year budget, we usually have about seventy seven and a half billion. So this is really like not, like to us as people who don't make, maybe some of you do, but I don't make hundreds of millions of dollars a year. So like, it does seem like a lot, but in the scheme of our overall budget, this is not a big surplus at all. And so again, when we look out to the um projected structural imbalance, AKA deficit in in the biotium after, um I really do not anticipate a lot, take that, sorry, also in combination with our split legislature, I do not anticipate a lot of extra edu- a lot of extra money going to education at all in the next budget. I think you'll probably see a slight increase to the to the base amount, so that basic formula allowance. Um we, the state is required to cover certain portions, right, of special education funding. We do have that increased to English learners. But I don't think we're going to see like additional monies, a lot of additional monies being allocated um to education, just because this is actually not that big of a surplus at all. And with the projected deficits, people will be thinking about not wanting to compound that or grow that potential deficit. Um I think that answers that part of the question, so then I'll shift it back to the to the board numbers.
Absolutely. Thank you, Krista.
Yes, and I, to echo what you said, Krista, I think at this point, two years ago, when the legislature just went on to give four percent increases, that budget surplus was something like seventeen and a half billion dollars. And so by comparison, this is almost nothing, or essentially a balanced budget, and therefore makes all of us um kind of at a district level, anyone involved in public education fairly pessimistic about the chances of seeing any substantial increase. Um specifically, with regard to the second part of the question, Shannon, was it it can you explain where state funds have been allocated and who monitors these decisions? Is that accurate?
Correct. Yes.
State funding comes with specific allocations. There are rules about nearly every type of funding that the district receives. And accordingly, following state statute, the district does have distinct funds. They have community service funds, and it has, we have a general fund, and we have a nutrition services fund. And there are rules around who, which funds can come in to that pot and what expenses can be paid with that pot. So the district has to um monitor all of them. Um there are multiple ways that monitoring happens. One is through um reporting to the Minnesota Department of Education. Another is by the board. We have the Citizens Financial Advisory Council, which asks for fund balances and um inquires as to their uses. And I think I'd like to hand it over to if to Riro or if Rhoda, if someone wants to answer those more specifically.
Yeah, we can start drilling down to more detail. Um Tarrero, if you could also um put your camera on and then we'll answer this question. So um one thing that's important to know is that about eighty five percent of our budget goes to salaries and benefits. So that's a really huge chunk of the general fund. And then when you look at what's remaining, then we're paying for utilities, we're paying for transportation and other operational expenses. Um as Treasurer Heartland mentioned, then there are um categorical funds that have um specific expenditure criteria, for example, um the debt service fund and community service fund, um nutrition services, things like that. Um but all of our uh program expenses and salary and benefit expenses that get distributed to our school sites to run our schools, uh most of that comes from the general fund and um the bulk of that is salaries and benefits. Tarrero, any more detail that you want to provide to the question about how the the state funds that were allocated are used?
Uh no, thank you, Dr. Mary Perry. I think you you summed it up. Uh just to, you know, give a little bit more context here, I mean, we do have uh operating funds and non-operating funds. So when it comes to some of the budget challenges we face, uh they actually are happening in the operating fund. So uh when the superintendent mentioned a general fund, uh our general fund uh pretty much um fund the majority of the district operations, meaning the salaries and wages, uh purchase services, supplies, uh certain capital expenditures, they are all tied to the general fund. Uh then we definitely have proprietary funds, uh the food service and community education funds. Uh those are usually funded through uh either reimbursements we get from the state or fee generation uh based on programs supported by uh either community aid or our food service fund. And then we have uh non-operating funds or debt service. Uh for us to maintain quality uh facility, we have to go to the market and borrow money. Uh that man, uh when we borrow it, we have to pay principal interest. And that principal interest is also tied to our uh levy in some of our state funds. Uh we also have um other funds which we cannot tap into uh just because of the restrictions. For example, we have uh funds we get for long-term facilities maintenance, uh for making sure that any defect maintenance in our buildings um uh kept up to date. Uh we do get some funding which is tied, which we cannot use for paying teacher salaries or for paying uh support staff salaries. Uh so I think that's the additional context I I want I want to give. Thank you.
Great. Thank you all for addressing that question. Um I think that leads us then to um there's a lot of, and my apologies, Krista, um questions, obviously, that are specific to Hopkins themselves, but one of the things that you addressed in your um your presentation was um school choice enrollment data. Um so there was specifically a question about that, um framing it as a um addressing the open enrollment trends. And I'm wondering if you could maybe go back to that slide where the numbers are um laid out as to what the trend is in our district in Hopkins. It's a positive net effect. Um but I also like the specifics that you provide around um the open enrollment out and then open enrollment in. If we could just take a look and then the the growth percentages.
Uh yeah, sure.
To kind of help answer this question.
Yeah, happy to go back. Um did you want me to voice over anything, Shannon, or did you, sorry, just voice over again the trends?
Yeah, I think it's good to look at just those trends. And then um I think there's a companion slide about kind of
Yes.
The growth of types of students. Yeah.
Sure, absolutely. Um so um like I said, open enrollment is a uh school choice option where a student can enroll into a district that's not in their resident district, right? So they don't, it's like with Hopkins, um a student can enroll into, you know, Minneapolis, Robinsdale, Richfield, other districts um as well. And so when that student does that, that state funding follows that student to where they're enrolled. So when we look at open enrollment in Hopkins uh over the last um from fiscal years uh eighteen, so the two thousand seventeen, eighteen school year to the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four school year, we see that um Hopkins in general gains students in terms of their net, like they have a net gain. So um again, here you see the number of students that reside in Hopkins, like their families live here, they enrolled to a different district, though, so they left. And then Hopkins gained um students who they, their families don't live in Hopkins, but they open enrolled in. Um and in fact, I didn't point this out, but last year Hopkins had um its largest loss, but has also had its largest gain uh in terms of students. And then in terms of net, meaning students who Hopkins has overall gained um from this process average ranges between two hundred to about three fifty. And so then comparing this to um when we look at student enrollment trends overall and broken down by student groups, um we see that total enrollment for Hopkins from fiscal year seventeen to twenty twenty four has grown by about two percent. Uh so that, that's that basic formula allowance that everyone gets, that two percent or that 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 everyone gets. Um and then when we look at uh the broken down by the student group, so compensatory revenue, um the special education revenue, and then the English language learner revenue, we do see that Hopkins has had a larger growth in these areas for um students for economically disadvantaged students, disabilities and English language learners. And so um what to think about here is that like, so yes, overall enrollment for Hopkins has increased, but also the makeup of students like has increased. So like the stu- oh, so like the student body likely has additional needs. And so even with some of that supplemental state funding that is received through those funding streams, it still is probably not enough to make up for the additional costs to educate um our students who have additional need in terms of transportation costs, additional teachers need, para uh para educators, things like that, to make sure the students are academically successful. And I want to make sure I'm framing this, though, in a way where it's not that these students are taking monies away or are not dr- like, these are, these are students who are Hopkins students, who um deserve to have the services and supports they need to be academically successful. And we, and you know, the state should be funding these accordingly, so that the students are getting the services that they need. So just want to make sure that point. You've seen the special, former special education teacher in me come out with that, making that point, so. Um, does that answer the question?
Yeah, absolutely. And I think too, um I share that perspective with you, um and also that they're all our students and um but it is kind of interesting to look at um the statistics. And also, just a quick follow-up question, because there was um a question from a community member about where are our students? Or what are the comparison of our enrollment compared to neighboring districts? Is that information that we can um access? Like, I'm wondering where you got your information and is that something we can um we can look at and and speak to?
Yeah, absolutely. So the Minnesota Department of Education has a really great data center, uh where you can pull enrollment numbers as well as open enrollment numbers and student demographics. Um Shannon, if you give me a list of peer districts you want to see, I can pull those numbers from you, for you all. Um just send me a list of peer districts.
Great. Thank you so much.
And Chair Andreessen. As a follow-up to this same topic, the board heard during our workshop on November twelfth, which incidentally is the same day that we met Krista Kepa for the first time at the board table, but in that same workshop, there was a communication strategies, an enrollment and family engagement update that was given by um Director Jolene Goldati and several other staff members. And so that is available to look at for any community member would point you to the workshop recording on November twelfth. And I don't know if any of the people who were on that wish to say anything right now, or if they think that uh that pointing people towards that resource is sufficient. Because they, I know we did talk about some of the ways in which our communications department has adapted to this current environment to uh recruit and retain our families.
I can speak a little bit to that, Shannon, if you're, um Rachel, if you'd like.
Sure, thank you.
I, so um yes, I'm in charge of communication marketing and also enrollment. I apologize, I don't have my camera on right now. I'm not camera ready. Um but I, so I can share a little bit of information from last year at least. Um our top desk, our top districts, um where we tend to have students open and roll out is um Minnetonka has the majority with about, that's about sixty five percent of our open enrollment um out. And Hopkins is to Minnetonka. And then from there, it it's it's um really, there isn't even a clear second. Um Adina is fourteen percent, Eden Prairie is six percent, and St. Louis Park is um six percent as well. Um and then for open and rolling in, it looks like our top um districts are Minneapolis with thirty five percent, Robinsdale thirty three percent, St. Louis Park um actually with eight percent, so more um going um in from St. Louis Park than out to St. Louis Park, Osseo at five percent, Yezetta at four percent, and Eden Prairie at three percent. So that's kind of how how those numbers break down. At least for last year.
Thank you. And I know that the um the update that you gave and some of the the strategies that your department uses were covered pretty well in that workshop agenda item that the community can reference. Are we ready for the next question?
Yes. Um let me get back to that. Um we did get um some specific questions around problem solving, um what we think are going to be upcoming budget cup, budget cuts in the district. And I think that um as you said, um Treasurer Heartland, that those are questions that we kind of don't really have any answers to as we're still looking at everything. Um and this is just the beginning of the process, as you mentioned. And so I think that um making sure that we as a a board are keeping these questions in mind and are um looking through and just if maybe we could let our community know um maybe a little bit more of how that process does work. Um if we wanted to um make sure, I'll kind of roll this it this into another question. So I'm 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 playing a little loose with um questioning, but there are a lot of questions around specific programming, um if they're going to be cut, and then classroom um versus administrative spending. So I think that what I'm going to do is uh maybe address um that issue of administrative costs and administrative spending and um classroom and program spending, which I think um in my mind, as as a board member, when we went through um, I think from my tenure on the board, this is my third round of budget cuts that I've gone through. And what I have seen, um and in particular in this last round, was um there was some um not very many classroom cuts, but administratively, I saw um the admin taking some pretty deep cuts, um at least at the district level. And I want to reiterate that there are um, as we go through this process, from my perspective, I don't think there are any things that are off the table and everything's being looked at. And I think um we really value this input of how can we do things differently? What is another way in which we could maybe deliver the same type of programming, but in a more efficient way? And so I want to thank those community members that have done this. Um and then also just to let everyone know, I don't think um they understand, but as members of the LAC, we talk about this all the time about how much when the state um passes a lot of what we call unfunded mandates at the LAC. passes a lot of what we call unfunded mandates at the LAC. And a lot of that turns into paperwork for our administration and data collection and reporting out. And a lot of that is not, there's not corresponding funding to pay for the staff or the time or the expertise that is required. And so just making sure that there's an awareness in our community that those are very real things that school districts are responsible for. And a lot of that can have a direct impact on our students and our families' quality of education. I was just in a meeting tonight where we were talking about our homeless families and how vital and, or, or unhoused or temporarily unhoused families. And we have a very vital role in making sure that those families stay connected to Hopkins and to a learning community. And that takes someone who is overseeing a very complicated and really important program called McKinney Vento. So it's another thing that's operating behind the scenes that administratively, that I don't think our community is necessarily aware of. So I just wanted to make that statement and also thank everyone for their suggestions and creative looks at how we can balance staff and program cuts and make sure that they're equitable. But I do now have a question around special education funding and support. And I'll just ask it and whoever wants to, to answer this can, maybe Krista, you want to start from a higher level? But it's, the question is, how does the district address the high costs of special education, given its significant underfunding? Additionally, how can the district improve support for special education? By addressing para shortages and increasing pay?
I can answer that. So we are mandated by law to provide the services. We currently have the most paras in place than we've had pre-COVID. There are turnovers here and there, but we are staffed. And I'm sorry, this is Fonda Contreras, Director of Special Services. I also am not able to turn my camera on. And so we do have staff in place. We have the fewest amount of para shortages than we've had in many years. And there are para negotiations currently underway.
So I want to give more- I appreciate that. Yes, Krista.
All right. I just want to give a little more context for what the district has to grapple with. So the federal law, the Individual Disabilities Education Act requires that any student who has been identified for an IEP receive services and a free and, and a free appropriate education, which is awesome. I think that's great. With that said, though, the federal government has not really funded the special education mandate at the levels that are, I, I think adequate to support that. So the average, the federal government funds about 12% on average, that's on average. So it's very different by district of the total cost to educate a student disability. So that leaves us 88%. And then in Minnesota, as I said before, we do allocate about $2 billion annually for special education, but our system is a, a convoluted web at the state level of some student waits, a reimbursement system and some census. So it's very complicated, but the districts do have to front some of the money and then get that reimbursement. And so even if Minnesota is funding more, there's just the biggest driver right now of special education expenditures is student disabilities. For several reasons, like I said, one of them is that more students are being identified for services, which is good. If a student needs a service, they should get their service. But then with that, funding needs to adjust accordingly to support that. And that unfortunately, Minnesota has done some things to try to address that. Unfortunately, it hasn't been addressed at the federal level. So then that leaves the bulk of the responsibility on the district. So I just want to kind of give like broader perspective of like what's happening federally in the state level and how that impacts district.
Thank you for that, Krista.
Yes, thank you, Krista. And on the slide that you showed earlier, you said something like in fiscal year 23, Hopkins paid out of its general fund almost $7 million, right? To close that gap, to close that subsidy between what we get in funding for those services from federal and state sources compared with what the actual costs were. So the, I mean, the answer is that any costs that are left over that are in order to cover mandated appropriate services just comes from our general fund. Is that accurate?
Yes. And I do want to say the state since then has instituted a, a larger, like they're, they're covering a larger proportion of the cross subsidy. So 44%, but still that leaves 56% that is for the district to cover.
Wonderful. Thank you. And Director Fonda Contreras, you mentioned para negotiations. Would you speak the tiniest bit more about that? So you're talking about wages, they're contracted wages. It's not a high paying job. So the district has something like 200 paras. And I don't know if you're prepared to speak on what their average salary is, but it is, it's quite low. And so paras rightly are wanting to see appropriate market adjustments to their wages. And so they're in contract negotiations right now. Is that accurate?
That is correct. There are, the entire para group, not just special education paras, are currently negotiating their salaries because yes, you are correct. It is, they are one of the many groups that are paid the less in the district. And so negotiations are underway. And I think, yeah, and we just have to be ready. So when students, students can qualify for special education services throughout the year. So that if we budget for a certain amount, we've kind of been using trend data to slightly budget over what the total student count will be, because it constantly changes. And we do get a lot of open enrolled students coming into our district for special education. And anytime a student qualifies, that's another student in our count. So we are definitely up in special ed referrals and move-ins in our district. And we have to be ready to provide those services when those students qualify and are come. So it's a constantly fluctuating budget, which makes it even more complicated with the underfunding.
That makes sense. Thank you for your input. And I can only imagine trying to budget around such a, a moving target as that. Is there anything else, Chair Andreessen, that you think we should cover? Anyone else we should ask in this question?
I do think that maybe just, Krista, I know you addressed this at the beginning, that Minnesota separates out special education funding and that is somewhat unique. So just maybe if we can just touch on that a little bit, because I think it gets confusing for people, especially when we use words like from the general fund. When in reality, they're all our students and it's all part of the general fund. So I think if we can talk about how that separation is not necessarily the way it's done other places, that might give some good context.
Yeah, of course. So in a lot of other states, they have a, okay. So that basic for people formula allowance that I talked about, the basic allowance. And a lot of states have something like that and we call that the base amount. In a lot of other states, they have a weight or a series of weights, where when that base amount goes up, then the special education funding goes up because you take that weight. So for example, let's say the weight for a, a certain student with a disability would be 0.75. So then you would take that 0.75, multiply it by that base, and that would be the amount of funding that the district would receive for that particular student. In Minnesota, we do not tie our special education funding to that base. And so it, instead, like I said, we have a series of reimbursements, partially census-based, which is like an assumption. And then partially we have weights, but those weights are not tied to the base. So it gets very complicated in terms of like how it actually, the funding amounts shake out. Whereas in, like I said, other states, most other states. And, and if you want an idea of how the system looks, Mississippi just passed a formula, Tennessee passed a formula, Colorado made updates to their formula over the last couple of years. When you increase that base, then funding for everything would go up because you take that multiplier and multiply it by that base. So we do not do that here and it's very complicated. So.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think that helps. Yeah. So our next question would be around the use of reserves. And I think perhaps Luke touched on this when he did his intro. But if someone could elaborate on the decision to make cuts or to reallocate on budget versus utilizing the district reserves. And we can maybe address that question. And then there's the second part.
Certainly. I'll start and then possibly tee up Director Chapin Dukka. The district, so we underwent a similar process this previous school year. So there was budget cuts, there was a budget deficit in this previous school year, in our previous budgeting session. And Chair Andreessen and I were a part of that school board. And so many discussions happened at the board table. And Luke Jacobson is no longer on this call, but he did touch on it in his introduction. CFAC, the Citizens Financial Advisory Committee, made the recommendation to use some of those fund balances to cover some of the gap yesterday, or yesterday, last year, last budgeting session. And in the end, we approved the use of $3 million worth of funds from those balances to mitigate impacts to services, to mitigate impacts to classroom teachers, to mitigate impacts to programming. Because the truth is, is that all of the services, all of the programming, all of the teachers, all of the students that we have are valuable. So those decisions are very hard to make. And we do have, because of some careful stewardship of money, especially when we received extra dollars from the federal government during COVID, those ester dollars that Krista, you mentioned that are now phased out. But because we could use some of those funds for a while when they were there, we do have, we are fortunate to have some positive fund balances. And so the decision to use them is analogous to taking from your savings account. They're not easily replaced or replaceable without tremendous work and oversight. And so the decision to use them is not taken lightly. And so I think this is the point where I will hand that over to you, Director Chapin Dukka.
I think you treasure Heartland. Yes, I think you just summed up the decisions around the use of fund balances. What we do with fund balances, we, we separate them into a number of different categories based on state requirement. Some of the fund balances are restricted. So they are certain dollars we receive for different initiatives and programs. And we can only use those dollars for fulfilling those requirements. So if we don't use those dollars in a particular year, we carry them forward to the next year and then try to prioritize them. And then we do have some dollars which are non-restricted, meaning that they are flexible. And what we have done with some of those fund balance reserves. First of all, we have a board policy which mandates us that we keep at least 6% of our reserves into fund balance. And this, a lot of you may remember that at some point in time, many years ago, the district went into structural operating debt. And fund balance is a critical factor when it comes to, when the state declares it's, a district is more of like being insolvent. And over time, we've rebuilt those funds, just like what Treasure Heartland alluded, through some careful planning. We do have a health fund balance in our, in our unreserved fund. And we've used some of those dollars this year. We'll use some of those dollars into next year. But what we should be very careful about is if you become a practice of us tapping into fund balance to cover the gap between our revenue and expenditures, that will really be a danger, dangerous precedent. Because once we take those dollars out, they're not coming back. And we don't want to end up in a situation where we operate below the operating funds we, we receive. Because that can lead us to a situation which happened many years ago. We are trying to be very careful. We are trying to be very thoughtful in terms of how we leverage, you know, in multi-years closing the gap, leveraging some of the fund balance. While at least we are looking for ways to at least make sure that our revenues and expenditures are aligned and our budget, our budgets are structurally balanced. And that's, 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 that's where we are. We definitely put consideration into, into usage of fund balance. The other component we shall probably add to this is fund balance is also used as part of our cash flow. Because when the state gives funding to districts, they are not like consistent, like every two weeks we do get funding. The funding is, it comes in irregular ways. So having some cash flow in store allows us to be able to pay salaries and benefits for, for employees. While at least we wait for state to, to pay us or give, give us funds based on their schedules.
Thank you, Director Chapin Dukka. So you are saying that if we were to cover an entire deficit, say, from those funds, it would only be a Band-Aid to the actual problem. The problem where our expenses still outpace our revenues would still exist. It would potentially put us in a position where the district looks like it, because those would be so out of balance that we wouldn't be managing our money correctly and could be the, the statutory operating that you mentioned is where we get state oversight that would dictate how we do our budgeting process. And then additionally, we would be in a place where potentially we wouldn't be able to cover immediate bills because we get funding from the state that can go into our general fund sporadically. Is that accurate?
That's, that's very accurate. So let's say we spend all the funds in our reserve and we are left with nothing. And we need to pay our employees in two weeks. If we don't have fund balance, the only option we'll probably have is to go to a bank and borrow through like a line of credit and pay interest, which actually makes our situation worse. So with us having fund balance available, we are able to manage our cash flows so that we are able to pay. And that's the reason behind the district having fund balance. The idea from a governmental standpoint, fund balance is supposed to cushion us in times of need when we are not able to get funding. And I'm sure if you remember many years ago, where there were government shutdowns and governmental entities were not able to access funding required for them to operate, that's when fund balance kicks in and be able to crop us and make sure that our operations continue going smoothly. At the same time, we also understand the the need to leverage any fund balance we may have to cover up some of the gaps, knowing that this is one time, if we use it, we can get it next year. uh to cover up some of the gaps, knowing that this is one time, uh if we use it, we can't get it next year. Uh, if we continue operating where our expenditures are overrunning our revenues, uh, that definitely puts us in a very trajectory position uh where uh we won't be able to provide quality uh services to our community.
Thank you. Do you have time for one more question, Chair Andreessen?
Um, yeah, and I did just want to do a quick follow-up. There was a second part to that question. And I think you touched on it a little bit. Um, Director Chapin Duko, so just to verify um the re- the reserves that we have, you said are allocated and have um are restricted, some of them. And the question is, are we utilizing all of those to their full potential, essentially? Um, are we leaving stuff on the table? And then for context, um, are our fund balance, does it, is it much, much bigger than other comparable districts? Is it, you know, kind of right in the middle? Is it low? Um, do you have a sense of that?
Uh, sure, Chair uh Chair Anderson. Uh, in terms of our fund balance being uh uh much, much bigger than other school districts, I think we are comparable. Uh, is it a bit bigger? Yes, it is. Uh, at least in the last three years. How we got here, to be honest with you, is uh, we did leverage, you know, we've talked about it, when we received a lot of those COVID relief funds, uh Hopkins, we decided to invest those funds into long-term uh into long-term goals. And uh uh avoided to uh use those funds in uh activities which were short-term. So that really helped us with um maintaining a uh a better share of the fund balance, which is cutting to actually in advantage for us uh in times where those dollars are gone and our revenues and expenditures are not aligned. Uh, as far as the the use of restricted uh fund balances, uh yes, um, we are uh trying to be very um uh focused on making sure that as we uh navigate some of the challenges with um our revenues and our expenditures, uh, we uh leverage some of those restricted funds to close uh to close the gap. But as I said, uh, once those dollars are gone, we we cannot uh replenish them. Uh. A good example would be, for example, English learners' language. We cross subsidize that uh from the general. Uh, we have uh other areas in the uh in the system with uh things like operating capital. Uh, if we expend all the operating capital, uh then we are going to have more pressure uh coming from our general fund to provide the goods and services which are required for some of our uh operating capital needs. So we're trying to balance the scale here and just making sure that we are still uh within the required recommendations from our Citizen Financial Advisory Group as well as the Board Policy and uh sustainability going into into the future.
Thank you. Um, I'll move on to the last question. Um, Treasurer Heartland. And that is around the um fiscal year 23 and fiscal year 24 annual comprehensive financial reports um are not published on the district's website. Um. Can we have an explanation as to why and when can we expect them to be there?
Thank you, Chair Andreessen. I'll start. And then I think Director Chapin Duka possibly can finish up on this one as well. Um. Thank you for that question. We do need to um still post the fiscal year 23 annual comprehensive financial report or the audit that there exists also in Hopkins schools. In addition to the board and in addition to the treasurer role, there exists an an audit committee. And that committee is still awaiting uh a final, to review the final report from our auditing firm because the district has to have a third-party audit, the district. And so that is in the process of being wrapped up. And then we will immediately start on the fiscal year 24 audit. Those do get published to our website. You can look for fiscal year 23 soon. And Director Chapin Duka, do you want to address that further?
Absolutely. Thank you, Director Hatlin, and thank you Chair, Chair Andreessen for for that question. Yeah, uh, yeah, as soon as we finalize uh like what Treasurer Hatlin said, these are reports which are generated by our uh third-party certified public accounting firm, uh currently uh CLA. And they are finalizing on uh that information. As soon as that is finalized, we'll be publishing uh the reports uh on the uh finance website, which uh which actually uh archives uh all of the other reports between our audits, our our budget books, as well as any other uh financial disclosures we 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 have for the uh for the district. Uh, we we are finalizing some of that information in the next few weeks here. Uh, you should be able to uh get a report and that report will also be shared uh and communicated with um with the board.
Wonderful. Thank you. Chair Andreessen, I know you said that was the last question. We are just at about time. I have a short kind of closing remark. Was there anything else, um Chair Andreessen, that you thought was vital that we touch on tonight before we close?
No, I think it's great, except thank you so much, Krista. I always appreciate hearing um what you have to say and the way you put it into context. It's just really helpful. So thank you.
Thank you all so much. Yes, let me echo those thanks. We're just about done here. Before we go, I want to acknowledge that um Superintendent Rhodamiri Puririd had to leave at the very end of this call because her daughter had an orchestra concert. Um, but she was here and in touch with us and um monitoring to make sure that we get answers to the community members to the best of our ability. And I want to acknowledge that um several community members did um submit questions, as Chair Andreessen said, that are asking about specific programs. So they asked about teacher retirement. Um, people asked about para-professionals. They asked about immersion programs and foreign languages in our schools. And all of those are very important programs that the district cherishes. And as Chair Andreessen mentioned, none of those things are decided. So the fact that you weighed in and showed your appreciation and your desire to see those funded are very important to us. It will absolutely inform our conversations at the board table. You can hear, you will be able to hear us ask about those programs and get more insight into them at future board meetings. And hopefully there will be more opportunities for community engagement. Chair Andreessen and I, along with district admin, will talk about other ways to have more of these conversations as more specifics are figured out. Once we know the size of the deficit and the the size of our revenue and expenses for this upcoming school year. And as we know about some specific options that are on the table for rightsizing our budget, you will hear more about those. So they were not addressed in specifics today because they are genuinely unknown and we couldn't do them justice at the time. But your words were heard and we'll we'll continue to inform our talks. Thank you, everyone, for taking an hour and a half or more out of your evenings. I know that this is a really busy time. And um we appreciate the input and wish everyone a happy holiday.